And hope that you tune into our other content as well. Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, and the board has returned from the board interview for a opening of the Budget Recommendations Committee conducted down in the Wheelwright Room. So once again, good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my colleagues on the board, respected town staff, those in attendance this evening, and certainly those of you at home watching. Welcome to the May 22, 2023 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. I'd like to start by introducing the board to my right, Selectman Dan Shartran. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Our Vice Chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan, good evening.
Hello, everyone.
Our Clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman, good evening.
Good evening.
Selectwoman Nancy Belanger, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine, good evening.
Good evening.
And also in attendance, we have our Assistant Town Manager Melissa Roy and our Recording Secretary Joanna Bartel, good evening. And my name is Nico Popikosinides. I'm going to jump right into the agenda. First on the agenda this evening is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to weigh in, comment. We do ask if your comments are relative to anything on the agenda. You wait till the agenda item comes up. I will pause for a moment. Mr. Hamel? Good evening.
Good evening, Jerry Hamel, 12 Oakland's. I got two public comments tonight, so I'll try to keep them brief. Over the last few weeks, I've noticed a lot of activity going on with vehicles going into the parkway. I don't know if we've shut down the road as of yet. But the meeting that we had that is going to shut down the parkway was quite specific as far as vehicles, non-motivated vehicles only, with the exception for maintenance and emergency vehicles. I don't want to be breaking any laws, as the town I'm sure doesn't want to either. So I was looking through the IRSAs, trying to find where any board would be able to bring people into a closed area like this. I couldn't find it. And that's not saying it's not there. I probably just, it's daunting when you start going through the IRSAs. So I was just wondering if you have, if there is something that you have that I might be able to get a copy. I would, you know, thank you for that. I would appreciate you getting that to me because I would like to be able to read what that is. The other public comment is on the 79E that was talked about last week. 79E basically is basically a vehicle to, as we know, to help spur investment in a town that needs a little bit of spurring. I've never been an advocate of the 79E because I think Exeter is one of those unique towns that really, we've always have developments in the area that's being pushed forward. Last week, you had a, the Economic Development Director came in and gave you a list of things that are going on in Exeter. It's actually, it's a long list. So we know that things are going well in town. During that, one of the questions that was asked by, by the board was, geez, I hope there's going to be a restaurant put downtown. Well, the answer that was given to that, well, unfortunately, there's no place for one. So I just think that we're looking in the past of what's been going on in the town. Selectwoman Belanger, I agree with you 100% tax-wise. Should we be looking into that, what we're losing on a taxable basis? And I think that's one thing we should really be looking at. We've been very fortunate. There's been a lot of things happening in this town in this, in the areas that no one has come in for a 79E grant for. Because we start looking at some of the condos, three-quarter million dollar condos in Exeter. Who would ever thought, not one, or two, or three, or four, but multiple ones, and more to come. So we're seeing the downtown is actually doing quite well. So I just feel that the 79E is something that should be actually explored again. And quite honestly, I think it should be sunsetted because I don't really think it's needed in Exeter because I think everything's alive and doing well down there. And I don't think there's that much more room that it'll be beneficial for. So those are my two comments.
Mr. Harlan, thank you for your comments. Before you run away, I know on the first comment, you asked for some follow-up from the town, but I don't really understand. Could you explain what you're looking for us to provide you?
Excuse me?
I'm asking you what you're looking for the town to provide you.
Well, there must be some type of RSA that actually gives a town the right to actually shut down the road when it's that specific, especially when it's been closed down, because it's always been a gray area. And I always felt that the wording of it, it should have been a lot, it should have been worded a lot differently in the warrant article. It should have included things that you want to do, you know, all the events you want to do. It should have been part of the article. And I thought that was from the beginning, that was always my one thought in the beginning. Is it so specific right now that we, as a town, can't even go in there to do anything? And that's one of the reasons why when the article was written, the citizens' petition was written, it was hopefully calm back because no one wants to see these things go away. And I'm just looking at that maybe, is there a way to revamp everything? Is there a way to rethink it? We know that the parkway is going to be, for the most part, closed this whole summer because of the work that's going down there. And is it time to really kind of look at, do we do the right thing? Do we have to put another citizen's petition out, rewording it so that we're not into this problem? Because I just, it doesn't seem that only one body has a right to, we could shut it down whenever we want. It just doesn't make any sense to me because it was a little too specific, I think. So, so I figured there must be something out there that's actually, that you guys, you must be looking at that feels that, you know, gives you the opportunity to do that. And if it isn't, then we've got to do something that creates it, so.
I really apologize because I'm very confused. And I don't want to debate a warrant article and a citizens' petition because I don't think that's what your, your comment was, there are vehicles in the parkway. It's shut down because there's construction going on, so presumably those are vehicles.
I don't know right now, when we shut the parkway down, when we actually shut it down permanently, can we bring vehicles in there?
I think we've already addressed that, so. But you're looking for, you're looking for an RSA? You want an RSA?
Yes, go ahead.
No, I'm asking you, is that, is that true? I'm trying to understand what you'd like the town to provide.
That's what I'm looking at. When we do shut the parkway down.
Can you just look into that?
What is there that gives us the right to do that?
Mr. Dean and his office will look into that and we'll get back to you.
Yeah, and if I could have some, I'd appreciate it. Because I.
Do you understand?
I believe I do.
Okay. Good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hamel.
That'd be good, I appreciate that.
Appreciate that. We have a hand raised. Did you have any other comments, sir?
Yeah, it was that and the 79E. That would, that would be good if I got something on that. And the 79E is just my feelings. I just think it should be brought up with the board to really kind of look at. Is this something we really need out there?
And I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We have a hand up in the Zoom. We have Don Clement. If we could let Don Clement in, please? Good evening, Don. I think you're muted.
I'm unmuted.
There you are.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening to members of the board and good evening to Mr. Dean. I'm Don Clement, Senator, here in Exeter. Last week, the Select Board granted 79E tax relief to buildings in downtown. And while the requirements were completely met, I don't believe the spirit of the statute was actually met. About 10 years ago, I was an opponent for and advocating for these 79E. I thought it was a good thing to move ahead for Town of Exeter. It was a good concept. To provide tax relief, to incentivize owners who invest money in downtown buildings that were neglected, excuse me, that were neglected or rundown. In turn, the building owners will spend more dollars to rehab and improve those town buildings and thus provide a public benefit. My fear now is that 79E concept is being slightly abused. We have greatly 79E tax exemptions to projects already underway. These projects were going to happen or are happening with or without the 79E approval. It seems to me that we are, in fact, rewarding, not incentivizing. As I stated, this is not the spirit of the 79E statute. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clement. Are there any other public comment before we move on? Okay, seeing none. There are no proclamations or recognitions this evening. Next up is the approval of the Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of May 15, 2023. I'd ask the board if there were any amendments or revisions. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of May 15, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's unanimous. We have one appointment this evening and one resignation to consider. We'll start with the appointment of the individual we just interviewed down in the Wheelwright Room for the Budget Recommendations Committee. I would entertain a motion to appoint James Darden Reeves to the Budget Recommendations Committee.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Reeves, for volunteering. And unfortunately, we have a resignation to consider from the Zoning Board of Adjustment. One moment, please, I would ask the board to consider the resignation of David Mersky from the Zoning Board of Adjustment. from the Zoning Board of Adjustment. There's an email in our packet with Mr. Mersky's letter of resignation. I would entertain a motion to accept the resignation of David Mersky from the Exeter Zoning Board of Adjustment.
So moved and thank you for your service while you were able to serve in the board.
Second. And second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? And the board shares that thought of thank you for your service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, jumping into our discussion items this evening, we have the Squam Scott River Siphon Project Financing Plan. We have Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager and Finance Director, Mr. Stevens here. We also have an update from Mr. Velasic that Mr. Dean can provide. So, Mr. Dean, I'll let you take it away.
Okay, thank you. So we met last week to discuss financing options for the siphon project. And first of all, just to point out that the gross cost of the project is now $7.7 million. So we're basing all of our financing scenarios off of that $7.7 million. There are several funding sources for the project that are already approved, and this includes a $1.6 million original SRF loan that was approved at the 2020 town meeting, 180,000 in state ARPA funds, 600,000 in federal congressional direct spending funds, 420,000 in local ARPA funds, 500,000 in additional local ARPA funds, and then $2.1 million in sewer reserves that were approved by the, the board to contribute to the first barrel installation of this project. So these, these approvals, when they were done, the sewer reserves, particularly in the local ARPA funds, the additional money was really necessary to keep the project moving and provide funding to cover the cost of, of drilling and installing the first of the two barrels. Now, since the approval of the second local ARPA fund allocation of 500,000 and the sewer reserves allocation of 2.1 million, the town has received notice from DES that up to $5.3 million in additional SRF funding would be made available for the siphons project if needed. And as a result of this confirmation, we developed four financing options with the intent of using SRF funding as a component on all the options. The SRF funding would be realized by amending the loan agreement the town already has in place for the $1.6 million SRF loan, and special town meeting approval is needed to authorize the additional SRF amounts. So in the packet, there are four options, as we mentioned. Option one would include you contributing, not using any of the local ARPA second authorization and not using any of the sewer reserves, but it would account for $113,986 in local ARPA funds that have already been spent on the project. So if that option was accepted, accepted by the board, then the, the SRF amount would be $5,206,014. Option two, slightly different from option one, it would include the use of all the local ARPA funds that have been originally authorized by the board, that's 420,000. So a slightly lesser amount, excuse me, of SRF would be needed, and that would be 4.9 million. Option three would contemplate using half of the second authorization of local ARPA funds. So instead of 500,000, 250,000, and then 650,000 of sewer reserves would go toward the project. And that would make the SRF amount an even 4 million that we would look for from the special town meeting. And then option four has all funding sources identified to date included, including the local ARPA funds of 500,000 and the full amount of the sewer fund reserves of 2.1 million. And if that option is chosen, then the additional SRF funding needed would be 2.3 million. So those are the four options that we looked at. Now that we know SRF funding has been made available, you know, we are recommending an option that lessens the burden on the sewer reserves and uses fewer ARPA funds than originally asked, were asked for. And this would allow the town to utilize SRF funds at a very favorable interest rate and amortize the cost of the project over several years, which would assist in maintaining a more stable sewer rate structure going forward by maintaining reserves at more desired levels. So those are the options, Mr. Chair. And I'm sure you're going to have some discussion about these.
Discussion and some questions.
Sure.
The additional SRF needed between the four options, is that, just so that everyone understands, is that going to be the amount of money that's requested should the court approve a special town meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. Is everyone clear?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Chartran.
Roughly, I know you can't give an exact answer to this, but roughly, what will the interest rate be on the SRF?
So we're contemplating keeping the 10-year loan at this point. There was a handout earlier tonight that I gave the board. The going to a 15-year loan would essentially mean a greater amount of interest would need to be paid on that, plus a higher interest rate. So it's actually more favorable to keep the 10-year loan at 2% instead of going for a longer term.
And whatever we ask to, ask the town to approve on SRF loans would be locked in at that 2%?
At 2%, yes, if we keep.
As long as we stay with 10 years?
Yes.
Yeah.
And as, as we are hearing from DES, we're also anticipating 10% debt forgiveness for the project. So that's another benefit that we would be able to get through the SRF program.
Do you have any questions?
I don't think so.
Okay.
But I.
Reserve the right.
Yes.
Select woman Gilman.
No, I don't have any questions. Just trying to mull over the, which option.
Yes, I'm, I have a, I just want to make sure my math and I'm getting this. On option three, so if we don't, the second authorization is what we recently authorized. Is that correct? On, on the ARPA?
Yes.
Okay. And the sewer funds. So for example, on option three, we have 250,000 local ARPA and 650,000 in sewer reserves. So if we opt to take that out of the equation, we would need 400, 4,900,000 to borrow, right?
Right.
And we have up to 5.3.
That's correct.
Thank you. Just checking my.
Actually, could we get those numbers again, like what the ARPA money is on each option and what the water and sewer reserve is on each? Is it on there?
It's in the packet. It's, it's.
Oh.
Yeah, because I, for one, would like to see if we could find a way to get the sewer funds back in the sewer funds, especially at that interest rate.
So I, I think I like.
Thank you.
I like option two because it does, it does just that. It returns the ARPA money back to the available balance and it also returns the sewer fund reserves.
Yes.
But I'm also cognizant that this is a job that needs to get done, and we need it, we need a 60% favorable vote. And I'm wondering aloud if 4 million looks better on a ballot than 4.9 million? And it also shows the voters that we are using some additional ARPA money and also some of the sewer funds. So in an act of good faith, we're asking the voters, obviously for $4 million, but we're also utilizing resources that we have.
I understand. It's the 2% that is.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah. That's, that's a tough decision, I think, at least at this level for us to make and help the voters understand the reasoning for the decision we ultimately make.
So that's where I'm torn. I mean, I do favor option two because of the 2%, but I think if we're looking at trying to push this to success, option three may be easier to swallow for many voters.
Well, the easiest option would be option four.
Which is what we talked about before the SRF money was available.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, the X factor in all this is, is getting that super majority of the vote in the special town meeting.
In August.
In August, yeah. And I just think the less we ask for, the better chance we have of, of success.
Is it, would it be possible to like put it on the ballot?
An either or?
Yeah. We have to ask for a specific amount of money, so.
The article language is prescribed by statutes.
Yeah. Right.
It's going to read the way the law says it needs to read. The amount can be amended at deliberative session.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm thinking about it. You know, because I, it would.
While we ponder, we have a member of the public that has their hand up. Could we let Mr. Clement back in, please?
I can't help you guys with a decision. I just have a question. How much money did the voters authorize for the siphon project? And by that, I mean, how much was authorized for town meeting vote? The date?
Town meeting?
Yes.
Has approved $1.6 million.
Okay, but there were other monies that were added, like some of my property, correct?
We had, we had some congressional.
Direct spending.
Direct spending. We also used some ARPA funds.
Right.
Okay. And those that have already been used?
Correct.
Correct. And how much is that then? What's that bring the total up to? I had.
So, Don.
I'm just doing math.
Yeah, Don, the way it breaks down is there's 1.6 million original SRF loan approved at 2020 town meeting.
Yep.
Got that?
Yes, I do.
And then there's, and then there's 180,000 in state ARPA funds. Okay?
How much?
180, 180,000.
Yep.
And then there's 600,000 in federal congressional direct spending funds. You got that?
I do.
Okay. And the next one is 420,000 in local ARPA funds. Got that one?
Yep.
And then there's 500,000 in additional local ARPA funds. You got that?
I do.
And then there's 2.1 million in sewer reserves.
But that, that 2.6 hasn't been spent yet.
I have that, but that wasn't authorized by the voters.
Right.
That was a select board action.
Several weeks ago, right. So that, that 500 and the 2.1 were just approved.
But those are the six sources that have been approved in some way, shape or form by different bodies.
Yeah, but I, and you're, and you're right. I agree with you. I understand that, Select woman Jan, Chartran. But I'm trying to determine, we're going to go back to the voters on this special town meeting to ask for additional funds and complete this project. What I'm trying to determine is how much have we spent on the project now versus how much are they going to cost? What is the difference? How much, in other words, how much is this project going to cost us in total versus what we, the voters, approved?
So, Mr. Dean, earlier in this meeting said that the total cost was going to be 7.7 million.
Correct. I heard that.
I'm sorry?
I heard that. Correct, yeah.
Okay. The second, the second barrel, if approved at special town meeting, is going to be 2.3 We have a lump sum agreement. I'm sorry?
Is that on top of the 7.7 million?
No. 7.7 is the total, and now I'm going to work backwards to answer your question.
Okay. Okay. Sorry about that.
So it's okay. 7.7 total, 2.3 for the second barrel, if it's approved at special town meeting. We have the first barrel that's currently under construction now, under a lump sum agreement where nothing will be paid until it's successful. And the cost of that, Mr. Dean, is also 2.5.
5.1, I'm sorry, 5.4.
That's including work that's already done.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm trying to go backward for Mr. Clement.
Okay.
I worked that backwards.
So including, Don, come, come at it a different way, including what, what's already been performed? And if this first barrel is successful, then it would be 5.4 million. So that's work that's already been conducted and the first barrel upon completion, providing it's successful.
I, I, thank you. What I, what I was trying to determine is, and I know this is how we got there, but we went from an original estimate of 1.6 million to now it's 7.7 million.
Correct.
For many reasons.
Mm-hmm.
And we're looking for a special town, well, you're debating on how to package that for special town meeting, but it comes out to basically roughly about another 4.4 million more of, is required, authorization is required. Is that a fair statement or am I just?
No, no. So.
Okay.
We, the board several weeks ago authorized 2.1 out of this, out of the sewer reserve fund, an additional 500,000 from ARPA money. Okay? And that, that money, that 2.6 collectively from the two sources I just cited, will bring us to completion of this first siphon, providing it's successful. The request for the second siphon is, or the, or the cost, rather, of the second siphon is 2.3 million. The four and the 4.9 that we're debating now, we're discussing now, is because of SRF money that is now available. So when you're looking at the four, the 4.9 or the, or the other amounts that we've discussed, there are four different options here that, that are in the packet, by the way, that, depending upon which option we go with, could, could return, for lack of a better word, some or all of the ARPA money that we just approved several weeks ago, the 500, in addition to up to the 2.1 from the sewer reserve. So the cost of the second siphon is 2.3. The request at special town meeting may be more because of the SRF money available, and that would be returning money that we've just appointed from the two various funds I discussed.
Okay, thank you very much. Understood.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The original package is going to be three barrels, but 210s to 12? What's the two that they're going to do now? What are the size of the two that they're going to do?
12.
12.
Two 12s that were okayed by DES.
Two 12s.
Two 12s.
Okay. So calculations as far as flow, just a little less than we would add with the three because of the increase in size of the 210s to 212s, I'm assuming.
I believe that's how Mr. Velasic has described it in previous meetings.
Yeah, you're going from 32 to 24.
Thank you for your question. Back to the board.
Well, and listening to the different, or, and different sources and reading the memo, I'm, I'm inclined to go with option three, which does keep more money for us in the sewer fund reserves, because we were getting pretty close with the amount that we had talked about at the last meeting.
Right.
Getting a little too close to be scratching our nails if something went wrong, something else went wrong. So I'm inclined to go with option three with the clear 4 million, 4 million dollars.
I'm inclined to agree with you. One second.
I mean, me too. I do.
I do, I wonder about having some sort of discussion at the deliberative session, too.
I see, I think, I see what you're saying, that if, if.
Because the, I mean, the interest is a big deal.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
You mean, the low, the lower interest rate?
Yeah, the lower interest rate. And here is our finance.
Mr. Stevens, good evening.
I didn't want to give my two cents until I heard a, maybe this one makes more sense. I, I too agree that option three makes the most sense. You know, nice to know we've got it if we've got to spend 2.0 million of sewer reserves, but nice to not have to do it for all the practical and operational reasons that one might think. I think that the scaling back of the ARPA gives you folks some flexibility to do it, something you might otherwise won't want to do, and then, you know, maybe even more importantly, putting that sewer fund reserves back, you know, not to make things more complicated, but if you felt like you wanted a lower number to go to the town with, you know, maybe the 650 of sewer funds comes up a little bit, but you know, if you wanted to cheat that actual borrowing amount down, but I do like maintaining that reserve.
I have a question, if I may.
Of course.
The 10% forgiveness?
Yes.
Is, are we limited to where that forgiveness funds would go, could go? Could that also help to put money back in the water sewer fund?
It just, it gets applied to the first one or two-ish payments that you make, so.
Is that how it works? So it's not like we get money back, it gets applied that? Thank you for clarifying that.
It's used on the principal, and the interest is thereby reduced.
I'm just trying to keep the water. The sewer fund.
Applied directly.
As intact as possible, so, thank you for clarifying.
Mr. Chartran?
What are the current levels of the water and sewer reserves? We discussed it, and I just can't remember.
Right. The, I gave them to Mr. Dean earlier today, just over 6 million on sewer, but keep in mind, we have a 3 million and change payment at the end of the year for our wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
And boy, I'm not sure I remember right off the top of my head on the water.
And that comes out of the reserves?
The, yes, right. So we're building up all year round, you know.
So we don't really, so we don't really have 6 something?
We have, if it's a 3.5 million dollar payment, I think it's 3.49 or something this year, we have half that.
So the 2.1 would actually bring us down to about 900,000?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's an ebb and flow from year to year.
Well, that's tighter than I thought it was. Yeah, I just, I would love to sharpen that. I, I see some of my fellow select board members coalescing around 3. I'd love to sharpen that number and get it down below 4 million. I'd love to have it in the, the 3.5 to 3 million range, just because I want this thing to pass.
Yeah. I know, I do not want to try to work, yeah, I do, I do too.
So I, I think if we could develop an option 3A that was kind of priced for retail, that would be great.
Well, is there, is there some ARPA money that we could?
We've, we've pretty much maxed that out.
Yeah, okay.
We have a little bit left that.
But not.
Is sort of, will be.
Just one point of clarification. So in the numbers you're looking at, we don't have baked in the 10% forgiveness, you're looking at the full.
Right.
The full frame.
But that's what we'd ask the voters to approve.
Correct.
The full frame.
Correct.
We wouldn't.
With the possibility.
There's no sleight of hand on, on the warrant.
Right. In fact, I think there's language in the warrant that says, with the possibility of 10% forgiveness.
Yes.
Great.
Yeah.
So are you suggesting on a 3A, maybe adding another 500,000 to the sewer fund reserve? So instead of 650, it would be?
1.15.
Right.
And then that would leave.
Bring it 0.5.
Just under 2 million, roughly, left in the reserve. After the year-end payment for the wastewater treatment plant.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, I guess that, that would be where it would come from.
And that would keep it at 4? The option 3 at 4 million?
No, it'd be 3.5. You're adding another 500 to the 650.
I did, thank you.
Yeah, I just, whenever we've gone in front of the voters, we've always tried to be as tight as we can, especially when there's a super majority required on bond issues.
Is the, if I could ask a question of the board, are you comfortable with the 250 reduction in the ARPA funds?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Clement, you had a question?
No.
He said no.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I thought, I thought you said something else.
Can I ask, what do we have for ARPA right now that's not already been voted on?
So we, we were, with the 500,000 in authorization, I believe that brought us down to 236 in
Which I'd like to keep.
No.
Other.
Right, so we're either going to add 250 back to it, right? We could, or use the full 500,000 that we've already?
Well, I, personally speaking, I'm more comfortable adding the 500,000 where we, we had originally approved 2.1.
Yes.
So we're basically cutting that in half. You know, if we have the wherewithal to do that, then I'd like, personally, my opinion, I'd like to keep some of the ARPA money.
So the 250, 250,000?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay. And then just use more of the sewer.
Which is still almost after what we initially.
Yeah, no, I'm happy with that. I, that was a tough vote to vote that much of the sewer fund reserves, so. I don't know. I think we found a good compromise.
I mean, I, I could be comfortable with that.
10 years to stick with the 2%?
So am I hearing an option with 1,050,000 of sewer reserves?
1.15, is that right?
Yes.
Or, wow, I'm sorry, 1.15. Correct.
Yep. Option 3A.
The charred option.
Don't say that at all, no.
Exactly. Gives a good brand.
So is that consensus on the board?
Yeah, I'm happy with that.
Okay.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, I would like a motion if you, if you would make one.
I would entertain a motion to approve Siphon Project Financing Plan under option 3A, which adopts option 3 in our packet, however, adding an additional 500,000 to the sewer fund reserve for a total amount of 1.15 million, which would bring the additional SRF needed to 3.5 million.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second?
Figure it out. You can pick whichever one, Joanna.
Any, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Stevenson, thank you, Melissa, for your help on that. Mr. Dean, you want to give us a quick update on behalf of Mr. Velasquez?
Sure, there's a memo in the packet that talks about the drilling and progressing without any major issues. That was as of May 18th, and my understanding is that they are, they've completed approximately 400 feet as of today. That's a new, that's a new figure, so we're about halfway across.
Great.
So things seem to be going well.
Terrific. Okay, next on our agenda is a further discussion on town hall chairs, town hall chairs, and with us this evening is the vice chair of the Exeter Arts and Culture Commission, Mr. Scott Ruffner. Good evening, Mr. Ruffner.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm going to recuse myself again.
Okay, understood, thank you. You're back earlier than expected, so we're happy, I guess.
All right, I'm back, and I've got some packets for everybody with some information, and some pictures. So Scott Ruffner, Eleven Hall Place, here on behalf of the Exeter Arts and Culture Advisory Commission. And just a recap of when I was here, I think a few weeks ago or a month ago, we are looking to purchase 240 chairs, 64 packs of chairs from Sam's Club, and the total amount would We took the time to continue to raise funds from the community, and we wanted to thank the Water Street Bookstore, the Kiwanis Club, the Pine Street Players, Exeter Lit Fest, Nancy Phillips and Elliot Berkowitz, Team, Ruffner Real Estate, Vino Avivo, Exonian Properties LLC, Exeter Station Properties LLC, Bay State Financial, and The Word Barn for their contributions toward the purchase of these chairs. We were able to raise at this time 3,810, and our goal was really to get halfway to the 7,198 figure, which we did. We, the only snag that we hit, last time I was here, we discussed the chair dollies. They are currently out of stock. They are not available through the Sam's Club website. They're only available through the Direct Lifetime, who manufactures all of these products. And so it is looking like they will be out of stock until mid-July. So the idea and discussion with the Arts and Culture Commission, and also with Parks and Rec, would be to purchase the chairs, get them in town hall, and allow us to start with the additional fundraising through the, the sale and donations with the older chairs. And we're on automatic updates with the Lifetime manufacturer to see when the storage dollies will come in, and then address that as that happens. And the timing is good, that there's really not much going on in the town hall this summer, so it allows us the time to get the new chairs in, see options for storage in the perimeter, see how many storage dollies would be needed. Yeah, I think that's where we're at.
Okay, so the, the out-of-stock dollies at 5,7999 each are in addition to the 7,198, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure I understand that. Any questions, Mr. Ruffner?
No, the only thing is kind of unrelated, and I'm glad Mr. Bisson is here, is that I had a letter from a resident who wondered if we should be ordering chairs also for 100 Hampton Road to get a larger, will we get a larger reduction in unit price if we go for more? And do we know?
The answer is no.
There you go.
You won't get it. It's.
Okay, there's my answer. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, the only other thing that I just, the figuring out how many chair dollies we need, I would really like to get enough dollies to fit all the chairs we're buying, not so we have some on the dolly and some leaning against the wall.
Okay.
I think we can figure a way to make a little bump up so we can get the dollies up where the chairs are stored now. We have some pretty ingenious people working for us. I, I would just like to see a dolly that fits all the chairs.
Okay. We could do that, yeah. I mean, we wanted to kind of explore.
I understand that, but when they aren't, when they are in stock and they get purchased, I would like to see.
Okay.
The chair, all the chairs on dolly.
Four dollies would be enough for the number of chairs you bought.
Yeah.
Seven, yeah, and you'll have room.
Right.
I would just say, let's make sure that one or two of the dollies can fit in the elevator.
Right.
That was, that was something Scott and I talked about, because some of the dollies are very large that we might be able to do, but we wouldn't be able to get them up if you had an abandoned art gallery.
Yeah, the idea was kind of, yeah, that's right. You good?
No, it's fine. How do we get chairs up there now? We have separate chairs for up there.
Yeah.
So we would just take the chairs off the dollies and have to carry them after all. But if we could find dollies that will get on the elevator, that's a plus.
Right.
Perfect.
And in the meanwhile, if the chairs do arrive, they would be stored the same way the chairs have been stored for the last.
Understood.
You know, stacked nicely and not leaned or.
But if we're updating, let's do it right.
I'm with you. All right, let's do it.
So we have, including the four dollies, we have a difference between what has already been generously donated of 5,709, give or take a dime. And we talked about, Mr. Bisson, can you help me out? We talked about where that shortfall could come from, part of one of the Parks and Rec funds, or?
Yeah, we discussed the, the town hall revolving fund, that there was still.
That's right.
Plenty there after the, the two studies.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Thank you, that's right. My apologies, Mr. Bisson, I'm just, I'm just used to you asking for money, so.
This turn's coming.
Okay, and then we worked out how the donations are going to be sent to the town office, Mr. Dean?
Yep, and we.
Yes, it's all been worked out.
Awesome. We have them, a lot of them have been sent.
Great.
There, I've got some more for Greg, and I think there's three that are coming in tomorrow, so it's, I mean, this amount will be ready to be deposited in the next day or two.
And we have the 5,709 in the, in the town hall revolving fund?
Yes, we do. It's going to be tight, I think, with the two studies and the, and this allocation, but I think we're, we're under the wire.
Presumably, though, your fundraising will be ongoing?
Yeah, the idea is to wait on the sale of the older chairs until we get the newer chairs. We discussed at our meeting a little bit, and with Greg, we just have to finalize a, a plan for, we discussed maybe, you know, $100 for four of the chairs, but they also need to be assessed, because some of them are in pretty rough shape.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Ruffner?
No.
Just a, a quick ask, Mr. Chair, when you're ready, if you can entertain a motion to accept these donations?
I was going to do that. Can I do that in the same motion as the revolving fund, or would you like two motions?
I think two motions for that.
Fine. So I would entertain, do you want each amount, Red?
I think it would be good just to have that in the minutes.
I agree. I would entertain a motion to accept the generous donations from the following, to be contributed towards the purchase of chairs for the town hall, Water Street Bookstore, $1,000, Kiwanis Club, $1,000, Pine Street Players, $500, Exeter Lit Fest, $360, Nancy Phillips and Elliot Berkowitz, $250, Team, $100, Ruffner Real Estate, $100, Vino Avivo, $100, Exonian Properties LLC, $100, Exeter Station Properties LLC, $100, Bay State Financial, $100, and The Word Barn, $100.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's 4-0, Mr. Chartran accused himself. And I'd like to thank all of those establishments for their generous donation. And I'd like to thank all of those establishments for their generous donations, and thank you, Mr. Ruffner, and the committee for working to solicit these donations. I would further entertain a motion to.
Mr. Chair, well, you're just the dolly in this one.
Yep.
Oh, thank you. It wasn't before.
Thank you, I appreciate the reminder. I would entertain a motion to approve spending $5,709 from the Town Hall Revolving Fund to go towards the purchase of the chairs for the Town Hall as well as the chair dollies that have been proposed to hold the chairs.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. For nothing with Mr. Chartran recusing himself. Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Scott, and thank everyone.
Yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to point out that everybody involved, the commission as well as the other organizations are really excited about the studies that are happening and are interested in being involved in, you know, further fundraising and upgrades and whatever comes from the studies, so thank you.
Great, thank you, sir. Okay. Mr. Chartran is rejoining us, Mr. Bisson.
In your packet you will see a grant opportunity. Darren Winham sent this along to us. The Economic Development Group that he is part of in the Seacoast has some micro grants, and they are looking for events or projects that would impact the community. We applied and were awarded $1,500 to start a children's music, or children's showcase, I call it, not really a music series, I call it under the Exeter vibe. We created an umbrella to highlight a lot of our music that we're doing. We have the town's summer concerts on Thursday night that town generously supports. We started Tune and Fork last year with Team, and now this is going to be another added bonus, having kids' performances. Four of them throughout the summer, 11:00 a.m., so we're targeting the littles. We have three great musicians and a magician to cap it off, so this is actually, surprisingly, kids performers are a lot more in demand, so they're higher cost. And so out of the $3,000 that we would cost to put on the shows, $1,500 from this Economic Development Group to offset the cost.
Wonderful. Any questions or comments for Mr. Bisson?
Well, thank you for searching out these grants and all the ways you, Parks and Rec, try to find ways to include everyone in our community.
Yeah, well, that's one of the big things what COVID taught us, is outdoor entertainment. People are always looking for it. We do have the rain site in Town Hall, so we will, in case it rains, we don't want to lose out on that. But at the same time, we had a very successful intern this past spring that actually raised enough money to pay for all of it without using any, any of our funds, so it was outstanding. We just had our platinum sponsor come in last week, so.
Excellent.
Kudos.
So, Mr. Bisson, are we accepting the grant from Stratford Regional Planning Commission or Seacoast Region Collaborative?
Seacoast Regional Collaborative, so the Stratford County Planning Commission, they're, the secretary is the one, she sits, that's her position, so.
So, but the grant's coming from?
The regional.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay. There's no other further discussion. I would entertain a motion to accept the grant offered by the Seacoast Region Collaborative Economic Development Region in the amount of $1,500 to be used by the Parks and Recreation Department for the Exeter Vibe Summer Music Series.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Bisson. Mr. Dean?
So this is, this topic are the latest on tax deeds, and the board received tonight, you received a list of those properties in town that are on the tax deeding list, so we'll be moving forward with that process. That will involve notice from the Tax Collector's Office of an intended deed, and I think what our plan is at this point is to go down that list and start making calls to the property owners to see if we can get some action on that before we have to go to the deeding process.
Okay.
So, also in the packet, there's a memo about manufactured homes. There is an opportunity or a process that's different than what we've done in the past. The suggestion is to look at perhaps going to Small Things Court with the manufactured homes, and our understanding is the town of Newmarket does this as a matter of process, and it's very successful there, and they recover quite a few tax dollars doing that, so that is something to, for the board's consideration.
Mr. Chartran?
Can we just jump back? So they're going to be contacted personally as a kind of a first step?
Yes, we'll reach out.
Have they been contacted personally prior to this, or is everything via mail up till that point?
I believe everything's via mail.
Okay. So this is the first time they'll actually talk to an individual?
I would have to check on that, Dan. I'm not sure if we've had personal contact with people.
All right. Maybe if they reached out to us, but this will be us reaching out to them.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Dean, do you need any action from the board this evening?
Not tonight.
Great, thank you for the update. Okay, jumping to regular business, Madam Clerk, you've got it easy to see.
I do, I do indeed.
Thank you, Cory.
Thank you. Okay. Taking more time to find the thing. Okay, Mr. Chair, I move to approve tax abatements for MAP 65, Lot 113. Oh, I'm sorry. I move to deny tax abatement for MAP 65, Lot 113 for the tax year 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. It's unanimous.
I move to approve a tax abatement for MAP 104, Lot 80, Unit 1, in the amount of $2,107.80 for the tax year 2021.
Second.
And, oops, sorry. $2,024.55 for the tax year 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Unanimous. Mr. Bisson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In your packet, we briefly talked about last week about a possible purchase of security cameras for the tennis courts. I am looking for a motion to, or permission to purchase four security cameras with, using our IT. Not only will we be able to monitor the courts at all times, but we'll be able to livestream them. We actually had a meeting today with some residents on tennis, and they thought it was a fabulous idea, and we're really excited to know that, one, the courts would be monitored, but two, that they could pick up their smartphones and look to see if the courts are being used.
And also, aside from tennis courts and pickleball, presumably you'll be able to identify any vandalism or?
Vandalism, and also, this has been an issue in my last 20 years. We also have, we call them independent contractors go up there and teach lessons. And you know it. You see, suddenly there's a court that has 30 to 40 tennis balls. Usually a normal person that goes up brings a tube or two. The dead giveaway is when they bring a ball machine. And so that's something that we try to negate because we do have our own instructors, and honestly, they don't pay a fee to use them, and so they're making money on courts that are publicly owned, so.
Ooh.
But in the past, when we had Little Field Tennis, he always would scurry them off, but since COVID, we haven't had that. So we have confronted a few, and the biggest thing is the liability. If they're going to teach lessons, we have to have certificate of insurance, naming the town co-insured.
Mm-hmm.
Good. Can somebody tell me between Mr. Dean and Ms. Roy or you that what will be available left of the balance?
For the revolving fund?
In the rec revolving fund?
Yes.
It pretty much changes on a basis of what your customer is taking corporate registration is in and out.
Okay. We have the money for this.
I was just gonna say, I guess we've got the money for it.
Absolutely. We ended last year quite a bit.
That's all I needed to know.
$180, something thousand.
Okay, thank you. It's just a ballpark.
Okay, if there are no other questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the Parks and Recreation Department to expend no more than $6,800 from the Recreation Revolving Fund on the necessary equipment for video monitoring of the courts with the assistance of the Town of Exeter IT Department.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. It's unanimous.
And these will be solar powered, by the way.
Oh.
They'd be very green.
Nice touch.
Terrific. Thank you.
Good selling point, and you wait till after the vote.
Exactly. It's a bonus.
Thank you, Greg. Mr. Dean?
Okay, a few things tonight. The Memorial Day Parade, there was a question about where we are to meet, and my, the response I got was that we would meet in the regular spot that we normally meet, so keeping it simple. We'll be behind the fire department, and Don Matheson will have his bagpipes, and the fire department will be there, led by the chief. So that is that. We are working on exploring omniballot options for the special town meeting. We had a meeting today, so we're talking about that, and hopefully we'll be able to offer that just as we did at the, at the town elections this year, so we're working on that. I have a Health Trust Board meeting this Thursday, so I will be in Concord for that. We are continuing work on the classification study. The Assistant Town Manager and Finance Director and myself have all been working diligently on that, so that's coming together, and we've, we've got more questions for our consulting team, but it's coming along. CIP work is beginning this week. We'll be checking in with the different departments on their CIP requests, so that, that will be ongoing. I was alerted today to some, we're having some vandalism problems in the public restrooms across the street at the Town Hall. The chief sent us some documentation on that. We do have cameras, so we are looking into it to see if we can figure out just exactly what happened over there. But as a result, we're, we're also limiting the number of hours that the public restrooms are open, so we're going to close them at 7:00 at night as opposed to the later hours. That has been the case. And then the only other thing I had was the perambulation with Kensington. That's this Wednesday at 9:00 at Kensington Town Hall. Okay, I'll, I'll be there with you.
You know, I fight for the bill to keep the perambulations going because it is a New Hampshire tradition, comes up every other year that we can discontinue it because of GPS. And this time I was ready to do it, and I have a meeting in Concord, so I can't.
I had several meetings I had to move because Kensington Town Hall gave one date and one day, and they weren't the same, so I had to do some pivoting quickly. However.
Thank you, have fun.
I will. I lost my train of thought. We had, I had an email from Mrs. Ruffner, again, inviting and encouraging the Select Board to join the Memorial Day Parade Monday, so.
Did you say what time we should be there?
9:30.
Thank you.
We are, we are out of town, so I send my regrets, but it is the boys' first time out of the country, and we are so excited.
Very exciting.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Very exciting. Okay. Select Board Committee reports, Selectwoman Belanger.
I don't actually have one. Thank you. However, I did want to thank the, our DPW and our Acting Department of Public Works Director. I sat in on the Zoom meeting for Exeter West, and it was a fabulous, wonderful meeting, a lot of Q and A I got to read. I have about five pages of notes, so I did not bring them, but I just want to thank the people in that community who participated. The questions were great, the back and forth was wonderful, and I'm just going to plug a Parks and Rec thing. Senior Barbecue is this Thursday, and I have an appointment, or I would be helping there, so if there's anybody available, they really appreciated having a Select Board member there to, to help them. Not putting anyone on the spot, I'm going to try to get there in between my appointment and my, my planning board meeting.
What time is it?
It is at, I have it up for you just in case, anyone else. It's at the Town Hall, it's Thursday from 4:30 to 7:30. Exeter residents, 50 and over, make sure you register, please. But it was just a wonderful opportunity just to.
I will try to be there.
Thank you, that would be wonderful. And that's it for me tonight.
And I send my regrets, I will not be able to attend that Thursday, unfortunately. Prior commitment. Selectwoman Gilman?
I don't have anything to report.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Been a week. I also don't have anything to report.
Selectwoman Chartran?
No report, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I attended the Swayze Park trustee meeting, gave them an update on the siphons, and they're planning a sidewalk for their next meeting in June. It was a quick meeting. And at our last meeting, I talked of the tree committee, and I just want to give some specifics regarding the tree grant. I mentioned that there were going to be two or three trees, so these trees will be planted in Lincoln Street School on June 7th. Public Works will provide the digging. Mr. Bisson and Parks and Rec are going to be providing two tree diapers. Tree Committee is looking into obtaining mulch. The time of this will be June 7th. It's an Arbor Day celebration, June 7th in Lincoln Street School. There'll be the kids and the teachers there. It's going to be after school, so approximately sometime between 3:00 and 3:15. And the Chair of the Tree Committee, Eileen Flockhart, has extended the invitation to all Select Board members that might be interested in attending, so.
Between 3:00 and 3:15?
3:15, yes. And that's all I had. Correspondence, we have a memo in our packet from Mr. Bisson outlining the pickleball program and also the tennis program. We have a letter from the New Hampshire Public Utilities Commission. And, Mr. Dean, this is from our, I beg your pardon, it's from our Exeter Community Power Aggregation Committee to the Public Utilities Commission.
Yes, asking them to consider net metered customers as part of the program.
Great, okay. In our packet, we also have the copy of the letter that the board authorized me to write for the AARP grant. We have the NHMA Legislative Bulletin and the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank informing the town that the loan application for the Town of Exeter, for 20 years at level principal, was approved. And also a letter of appreciation from Big Brothers Big Sisters. So with that, our board calendar for the month of June, June 5th, June 12th, and June 26th, which we all previously discussed. And there's, see if there's no other business. I would entertain a motion to enter non-public session under RSA 91A, colon, 3, 2C.
So moved. Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Chartran?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
And Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. It's unanimous, the board will be meeting in non-public.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.